All right, we all ready?
All right.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order and we'll see what the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and wait for her to sit down. All right, we'll go ahead and look to approve the agendas. Anybody have any additions, corrections, or deletions? Brian?
I do not.
Paul?
Nope.
Brian?
Uh, no, not right now.
Mel? Tim?
Nope.
All right, we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan. We'll take a second.
Second.
Thank you. Brian? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agendas. Are there any item on consent agenda that you would like to discuss?
Yeah, um, there's some things on the fee schedule related to that, um, that I want to discuss, so maybe we pull that out.
You know, it's just the fee schedule itself, or?
Well, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Wacken Sack.
Why don't we move that to, uh, G four?
Move that to G four. Put that so I don't forget. Uh, anything else? If not, I would take a motion to approve with the correction.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with items A through G.
We have a motion. Thank you, Paul. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Thank you. Uh, there's no visitors. Yep, that'll come. Uh, under Mayor's report, I just want to thank, uh, city staff for working on the billing. There was a little issue on the bottom part if anybody was tracking the electric. Your months would be kind of globbed together, your usage, so they've been working with the software company and they've got that fixed, so I do want to appreciate and thank them for that. Also, I'd like to thank, or, uh, give out a round of happiness, or however you want to put it, for their girls hockey team for running their first ever state hockey and their coach for getting Coach of the Year. So that's really good for Casson and the surrounding areas, so. That's all I got for the Mayor's report. We have one public forum. Dave Devils, who would come up. Uh, Dave Devils, two oh five Fifth Avenue, Northwest Casson. Um, I've been on Fifth Avenue for, since nineteen ninety and some years it's worse, some, but it has to do with the speed of traffic coming through there. Um, today is about three o'clock. There was a guy on a motorcycle. Um, he was going as much over thirty miles an hour, much, and he does it a lot. What I would like to see is a stop sign about Third, Third Street and Fifth Avenue. We need to slow it down. People, they think it's a raceway from Fifth Street down to Main Street. Um, Mel even mentioned how she won't even walk on Fifth Avenue with her dog anymore because the traffic is so busy on Fifth Avenue. It's a wide street. Everybody can just, you know, it's a, it's a popular street for people to walk on, but I'd like to see it be a little more safe. Thank you.
Maybe we can reach out to the police department and just see if they can do extra patrolling there to make sure, and then with Brandon, get a time to look and see if that's feasible for a stop sign or not.
Will do. And that was Fifth Avenue and?
Third Street, yes.
Okay.
I mean, it could be second, but I think third would work better.
But if you want to just kind of look and see what you think, if it's something that can work or not work?
That, that would be a four-way stop, of course, there then.
Yep.
Thank you.
And the pros and cons of what's good about adding a stop sign versus the negatives if someone doesn't believe that the stop sign is necessary. They sometimes don't follow it, which is just as reckless as speeding.
Correct.
So some of the negatives and positives that go with that.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Tim, for reaching out to Josh.
You bet.
Um, there's no public hearing. Oh, I forgot to, under Mayor's report, um, just if everybody mind to pull your mics down and speak into your mics, you know, I just get used to it. That'll help, but, all right, thank you. No public hearing committee report, proposed hockey arena project.
So this is, uh, just a report from the, uh, the Ice Arena Board. Um, they had their, they have a couple of meetings during the year, typically two or three. They have one that would re, they reviewed the financials, so those are included in your packet. Um, and I also have that proposal in there, just as information. It's nothing that the city's planning on taking the action at this time. The association has brought these schematics and, um, so there's some different things they have to work through. At some point in time, that may come back, but this is just information for, for the, um, as you can see, the, uh, there was a small loss last year at the Ice Arena, about four thousand dollars. Um, and so we split those losses with the county, so we have invoiced the county for their half, and actually, they already provided that, uh, that the eighteen hundred or whatever it is, nineteen something to us. So, um, overall, close to breakeven this year on the, uh, on the Ice Arena. Uh, so that's all I have. Just to give you a heads up that they are, um, they are talking about things still, what the association is, and, uh, we'll see what comes out of that, so.
All right.
I'm on that committee now too, so if you ever have questions.
I was gonna say, who's all involved in the association?
All the girls and the boys hockey associations?
Association or the group that met the other day?
Group that meets is a county commissioner?
The, the board or the associations?
Well, who, who is the one that's looking at this new arena?
Hockey Association, so that's.
Part of the hockey association, so that's involved with the school, or?
They are not.
No.
We've, we did mention them reaching out to the school to talk about what options they have.
So?
Dodge County Youth Hockey Association is separate from the school district.
So is it like kind of a organization that works with people in a wide region to have hockey teams? Is that?
They run Dodge County Youth Hockey.
All of the county?
So anyone that's in the county or out of the county that can play for Dodge County Hockey, they work with.
Okay, so this is a bigger scope than just kind of like us in Mannerville?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what I was trying to get to.
Senator Hayfield, Byron.
Five or six, or is it four or five of them?
Well, at the lower levels, I think there's up to seven, because you can, if you're in some broader Missap, you can play youth hockey in Dodge County, uh, Dover Yoda.
But, but by the time high school, it's?
By the time you get to high school, it's Hayfield, Dodge Center, or Casson, Mannerville, or Casson, Mannerville, and Byron for girls.
Yeah.
Dodge Center, Casson, Mannerville, Byron, and Hayfield for the boys. It changes based on who is in the program and where they're enrolled.
All right, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to old business, number one, the fact sheet for applying for municipal cannabis license.
Sure, I know council's talked about this a few times before, but, uh, of course, last week, you know, Byron announced they were pursuing that municipal license, so just providing this information to you, so if you have any questions on it, um, they have submitted their application already, and I don't know, uh, you know, it'll be a while before they hear back on that, but, uh, we did have our first, uh, private sector, uh, interest in a dispensary contact us this week, um, and, you know, we responded to them. Basically, the way it works is that any of these folks who, they may be interested, but until they're licensed by the state, there isn't really anything we provide in terms of guy, I mean, we, we'll, we'll sit down with them if they ask us to and say, well, there's where zoning would fit and that kind of stuff, but, you know, there, there may be a lot of people who apply for these licenses who aren't going to get them, so it doesn't really make a lot of sense to, you know, um, deal, and they, the people who are serious about, recognize that too. So, uh, we had a, a lady who's out of Rochester who owns a couple of CBD, uh, businesses there, and she's interested. She actually lives in Byron area, so, anyway, um, this is for you to see, so, uh, you know, and, and then the next item down really is the, is the county's draft ordinance for low pan, uh, low potency cannabis, so they, you know, there's still things that are going to be coming out on this, um, so, just so I'm just bringing to you so you're aware of them.
I do have one question. According to league, they were in, the trust, insurance trust up there was saying that as of now, they're not insuring cannabis, so, well, how would we do it if we did it?
Well, I mean, I have to check with Byron. I'm not sure what they're planning on doing, but I would imagine you would just get your insurance through a different vendor.
Okay, because that was something they said they didn't want to be involved with right now. That was?
At the federal level. With federal requirements and mandates on the federal level and how much you can sell, it's different than the state.
Yeah, but, yeah, so that was just?
Yeah, I'm sure that the, the insurance trust is very conservative when it comes to, I mean, there, that's a level of risk they may not want to take because it's not going to take much for there to be an issue there, so.
Well, so that was my other question. Is it their concern? Is it, how does that lean towards us?
Well, as I said, I mean, you know, the, the guidance from the council was there, they weren't pursuing it this time.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just bringing it to you to let you know. It sounds like the first allocation is, that's hiring a manager already, actually, is up in Elf River, north of the metro there. They're, they're going to do it, um, and as I said, Byron, they're no, they're not guaranteed to get a license.
Sure.
But, um, I think they said that most immunities that, most municipals that apply probably will get the license. Um, so, anyway, just, uh, wanted to let you guys know where it was at, so.
All right.
Well, thank you for that.
Anything with the low potency cannabis. If there's any questions on that, um, Amy from the county, the county health is willing to come and answer any of those. Um, this is similar to the policy we had this last fall. You know, they're creating these, we're not allowed to be any more, uh, any less restrictive than the county.
Mm-hmm.
So it kind of, I don't want to say hamstrings, but it, it, it's one of those things where we have file guidance from them, so that's kind of just for you to review. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Up, uh, next is quote for microphones for chamber.
Linda, maybe you can speak to this one?
Yep, well, um, since it was brought up and it was asked, I got a quote for three more micro.
G one?
You can't hear me?
Usually my voice is pretty, my voice carries.
We heard her on the video.
It's not so much in here, it's on the video.
Yeah, well, you can.
Linda's on the video. She's got, uh, she's a good voice.
But our, uh, our mixer is full with these, so we'd have to get a new mixer and then that. So this is really for your information. If you want to do something with it, we can. If you don't, we can leave it alone. But everybody who needs a microphone, you know, all the council, it's there. Tim and I can share this, and Melanie and Brandon don't speak at the same time too, so that's why those were put over that way.
I can say, I, I look, sorry, this was going to be an ongoing thing all night. I looked up the type of microphones and the mixer that they're talking about on here. These are not the same microphones that we have. The ones that they're quoting are basically just the little stick guys without the stands. When you throw a stand on there, it goes up about another seventy-five hundred dollars per microphone.
Yeah.
Right, so it'd be even more expensive than what we're looking at.
Right, and I told them we wanted to be as inexpensive as we could be, but, yeah, if you want to, if you want to spend more, we can do that too.
Microphones are actually?
But if you don't want to spend anything, we can just leave this alone. I just got the quote because it was mentioned.
It's of my opinion, but it's only my opinion, that we would try to work with what we got and make sure you, people use the microphones that we got, because sometimes you'll see them there. So we bring them down and everybody tries to work with them. I think we try that for now.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially at the price.
I'm good with that.
So, looks like everybody's pretty much in consents. All right. So as of now, I'd say we're good. But thank you for reaching out and, you know, I appreciate that. All right, next business, new business, the Merck franchise agreement, which is?
We had an item under four that was?
Oh, I am sorry. I did not see that. I didn't write it down. I wrote it in the wrong spot. Number four, G four is the Wacken Sack fees.
Yeah, so I had a discussion with the engineer after a meeting, a few meetings ago, um, and our Wacken Sack fees, um, what I would like to do is, is consider changing from a per acre fee into a per unit or per dwelling or something I think would be more appropriate to what the fee is actually intended to do. Um, and I don't know, like, cost-wise, what that would change, that's not really my concern. My concern is, is when I, I see this fee that's per acre and, like, we've got lots way out at the outskirts of town where there, where there's one house per acre and they're paying two thousand dollars, and then we've got apartment buildings at Vale that are like forty units that are also probably paying the same two thousand dollars. To me, that's, that's not fair, right? Because obviously forty apartment units is going to be using more water than one house. So, in my discussion, um, with Brandon, he had talked about there being different ways to do it, and, um, I would like to consider trying to get some, something that's a little bit more fair than just a per acre thing, and maybe, maybe that's the way we do it because it's very simple to do it that way, and when we add complexity, maybe it's not worth the time and effort to do that, but I would just like to, to review that, um, and see if we can find something else. And it's not just, it's the Wacken Sack and, uh, the park dedication, I think, is also per acre.
I will say, you know, we've, we've contacted, uh, Brad Chive, so he will have some park dedication, um, feedback for us. I don't know. I think, again, he would thought, he'd have that in early March. So he's, he has his staff working on that, so I do have some information on that. I don't know, uh, Brandon, you know, you and I haven't talked about the, the fees in a while, but maybe we can discuss that tomorrow and, uh, see if there's some information we can bring and, and look at some possibilities there.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, I was just looking to the, the, I believe the Wacken Sack is actually staggered, so it's, it is per acre, but then it's also based on the meter, right? The meter size at the building permit? Is that, am I correct?
So there's a, is that, that's a connection fee versus the access charge, all right?
Correct.
So I think, I think the connection fee seems fair because that's based upon size. I don't, I don't have an issue with that, I don't think, but the, the per acre charge that we do every time we approve a plat, that to me seems a little unfair, so maybe if.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, so like a residential, so again, it's two-part, right? It's, it's a per acre, but then all, at the time of plating, but then when you pull a building permit for that building, like a single family is another twenty-four hundred dollars, um, and then maybe this is to your point. Multiple dwelling is twenty-five for the first unit plus hundred and seventy dollars, hundred and seventy-five dollars per additional unit. To your point that we're not generating that much, and if that cost is, should be more equitable to paying the users, that's why we have the fee, right?
Right.
Um, we could look at that, does a dwelling go up from multi-family, and does that make it more equitable?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see. And, and looking at, I mean, Tim presented a list of our permit costs versus surrounding communities, and like, we're at a good price, so like, price-wise, I'm not that concerned, it's just, I know when we, the last time I was looking at the Wacken Sacks and I was like, per acre, just, because we were talking about Vale, and then we're talking about the townhomes, and then I was, you know, thinking like, per acre, we got these one acre lots out on the edge of the town, and they're all paying the same fee, and that doesn't seem to make sense to me, like, for what a Wack and Sack actually is supposed to be doing, so.
Does the Wack and Sack fee, when they do a development like they do in the common acres, does that get rolled into the cost of, uh, your lot, basically?
I'm sure that's what the developer would do.
Mm-hmm.
Don't pass those costs on.
Yep.
So from some standpoint, it also would push for denser development, whether that's the council's direction.
The way we have it right now is pushing for denser development, right?
Yep, it'd be more cost-effective to develop denser.
On the scale of things, it's, it's probably kind of small, so it might not actually be doing that in, in practice, but still, I'd, I'd still like to see us be more fair, um, if, if it's feasible.
Well, we can take a look. We can certainly do some reviewing and, and try and bring that information back. Um, with that being said, I'd still recommend approving the?
Yes.
The fee schedules tonight if we can.
Yep.
And then, um, I'll talk with Brandon. We'll get a date set up where we can bring that information back for you on some of the comparables and some other options.
Yep, I have no, I have no other issues with the rest of the fee schedule, so if we want to go ahead and approve that and then make adjustments.
So I'll take that as a motion to approve the fee schedule under A two H for, what is it? Uh, fee schedule. I was like, looking, sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve. Oh. You have a second?
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
You okay, Mel? All right. All right. Sorry I missed that, G four. Now, we will go to new business, which is the Merck franchise agreement.
So there's a couple items in there. Um, basically what this is, is that, uh, back in the early two thousands, the city granted, uh, Peoples Natural Gas, the franchise for natural gas service in Casson. In the meantime, that was acquired by, um, Minnesota Energy, and that franchise itself is coming up. So, um, I got an email from the folks at Merck saying, hey, you know, this is the, these are the templates, this is what, you know, if you'd like to, basically, at this point in time, you know, the, the city has this option where they could opt out, and we could choose to own a natural gas service ourselves, the franchise. Um, I'm recommending that we continue with the private vendor. I don't think at this time that city staff are prepared to, you know, or that we're really prepared to acquire that system, um, but this is that, this is that discussion, basically, is, you know, do we want to continue to pursue, um, you know, that, that's sort of what it is.
My only question, I know that right now we wouldn't want it because of the, you'd have the extra cost, infrastructures, costs, you know, repairs, but would we want to maybe possibly change it from a twenty-five year to something less? Would they be interested in that, or is it not matter? I just think number twenty-five years is?
I would just say, this is their typical ordinance that they ask to be approved.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's up to the council if they want to do one that's a lesser time, we can certainly.
Well, I was just thinking down the road, if Casson gets to be the, a bigger sized city, it might be cost-effective at a future time. That doesn't mean in, say, ten or fifteen years, if we change it to that, we couldn't go back and re-approve it again.
Sure.
I just think twenty-five years is a long time for us to set an agreement now where things are changing all the time. Have, might be beneficial. It's just not an option.
Have we done anything in the last twenty-five years to start preparing?
No.
For this to end, or are we just planning to re-up? Because we probably won't be on council by the time it re-ups and we have to make that decision.
But I just, I just don't want to hold up another future council to a twenty-five year agreement if we can do a ten-year or fifteen-year. I don't know if it really benefits either way.
I mean, out of, out of ignorance, um, this franchise is basically us giving them access to our right-of-way in order to run infrastructure, correct?
Yeah, basically, we're, we're allowing them to own the system and enact our right-of-way time.
So if we revoked that access, do we have to pay them for what they've left behind? They're not going to go dig it up?
They would have to acquire the system if, if they were going to.
You'd have to pay for it, right, so we would have to?
Yeah, if they had to acquire the system, we would, they would.
So we would have to then compensate them for what's already in place.
That's right.
Yep.
In addition to them taking on maintenance of it.
Yes.
If you don't have any personnel.
But that, that's why I'm in favor of letting them have it.
Yes, and, and then I guess the next question is, is have, have we had any complaints? Like, with the natural gas providers in town where we might?
I haven't had anything other than, you know, the typical, when they, when they do repairs and they, you know, you've probably seen it like last year on Seventh Street, you know, there were areas where they dug in and it was kind of a mud pit and didn't get grassed eat right away. That's not unusual with any kind of construction project, um, you know, and, and everyone will, you know, uh, we own our own utilities where we do see the complaints about cost. That is not unusual for any utility, you know, especially nowadays with a bad winter or whatever, but aside from those, I haven't heard any, any real complaints on it.
Is there any, like, I don't understand legalese, so is there like a termination clause of some sort? Can we choose to terminate with, um, notice, or is this, once we've approved it, it's twenty-five years and we can't make changes to it unless it's mutual?
I didn't see a termination clause, but that doesn't, I didn't see a termination clause. That doesn't mean that, I missed it. I will leave that to the actual attorney in the room.
I didn't look at it that closely. Um, I would assume that there's no such termination clause in it. It's the, typically in franchise agreements, they're for an extended period. Um, there might be some options at the end of, sorry, there might be options, um, that would extend it, but without looking at it more closely, no.
We don't have to make a decision right. This is really just to bring it to you. It's not due until September, but I, you know, they emailed to us, you know, so I've just brought it to you, take a look at it, and that's a good question, and, you know, you know, maybe a city attorney can just take a look at it and she can dig it in deeper if that's a question that you have.
But it, it also doesn't hurt to ask them if they'd be willing to sign on a ten-year or two, but?
I was just curious, you know?
This is their, this is their model ordinance, so it doesn't mean that we can't amend. You know, I, we can improve it. I can send it back and see what they say. You know, that, you know, it, uh, I think right now, as I said, I don't think we're interested, at least, I don't know that staff is interested in acquiring the system. There are a number of cities in Minnesota that do have their own natural, Owatonna is a good example. They own the natural gas system in Owatonna. They sell the gas that's a regular utility, and it does generate, you know, a profit for them, and, you know, it's, you know, good customer service because it's local, you know, but I, I don't think we're really contemplating that at this point in time because there would be some substantial costs. I don't have any idea what the system acquisition would cost. You know, I, we deal with the electric world, you know, we're working on that Peoples acquisition that you're familiar with, but in terms of what it would cost, I have no idea. We don't have any contracts, but we'd have to have contracts. There's, there's a lot of work that would have to be done before we'd actually acquire a system, so. Well, I mean, it sounds like just a few questions. If you have other questions, just feel free to email me or, you know, and I can pass them on to you.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to either have a shorter time or to know how we could terminate it if, if, you know, the company, we were having issues with them, right?
Or even ask them if they have a, an idea on cost, because they must have an idea.
Value for it.
A value.
Yeah, system value.
And, and then the biggest question too is, it comes down to that, how old is the infrastructure on, you know?
Well, I mean, it depends, of course, you know, just like in anywhere in town here, you know, the newer subdivisions are going to have newer infrastructure and the ones.
Yeah, so I mean, we?
Uh, they, they have done a good job of replacing the gas.
They just redid all of Mannerville Avenue and new stuff when they did the?
Yep, and they, they work with us on a lot of our street projects, so.
I'm not saying we want it, I'm just curious.
Yeah, to maybe answer your question there, Mr. Johnson, um, whenever we do a reconstruct, they're usually in there replacing all of the system.
Before.
Yeah, before, so we've already met with them on the Southwest, uh, reconstruct project we're going to discuss here in a bit. They already said they're going to go and replace all their mains, um, which may be just the age of their system. Whenever they get an opportunity, they move out of our way. They work, we work well with them, so they're, they're a great utility to work for, so.
Yeah.
Easy to work with some of the other ones, so.
All right. We'll wait for?
Yeah, well, I'll bring it back and see if, uh, if we can look at it. So determinability would be something, system value would be another thing, and then possibly doing a little bit shorter period of time would be something we'd be looking interested.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, next, uh, administrators' report.
Sure, uh, not too much tonight, just a few things. Legislature is, is up and running. Um, bills are starting to get passed in the House. We'll see, they have a special election that's coming up here in a couple of weeks, and that'll probably bring it back to a tie, which will mean that nothing will happen again. So, uh, if you want to get something passed, now's the time, especially if you're on the, on the one side of a, of the party there. Um, compass, a couple of things there, you know, contracts. I know we've talked about this before. Um, we have been looking at battery technology, uh, just to meet our capacity needs, um, so we think that might be a better choice than, than the diesel generators just because of the, the carbon-free mandates the state has, um, but costs on those are pretty substantial too, so, um, we'll have more information on that. We'll talk a little bit about the electrical system on Saturday too, when we talk about in our work session. Um, we have some of those electrical system updates, and, and then the electric rate study will be presented, um, by the consultant who, who did it, so. Um, I know Brandon's going to talk more about the twenty-twenty-five, uh, project bids that came back. We still have a couple of projects that have to go out for bid. Um, I think Sixteenth Street, Eighth Avenue, Main Street, and then some of the trail work needs to go out as well. Um, so those will be coming back, but the Southwest project, the water tower both came in at, I think, positive numbers. Um, the water tower was kind of in the range we were expecting, and I think that the, the other project came in at a good price too, so, um, I'll let Brandon do more of that discussion. Question?
Oh, no, I was just going to remind everybody, the meeting Saturday is at the Fire Hall, because it is different this year, because Ryan was just asking that earlier, so didn't want to forget that.
I better not forget. I'll have to remember that, so.
So just a reminder.
What time is that again?
Eight AM.
Okay.
And opening the doors?
We want to.
And possibly, uh, Tim's going to push it up and maybe get us out by eleven.
I'm going to try. I think it, you know, we should be able to. We don't, the chambers, I don't think the chamber's going to make it, so I think they, they, they said they probably won't be able to, so.
I'll make sure to answer extra questions then, so we can use the full time.
Remind me.
All right, sorry about that.
Couple other things, no, no problem. Uh, the Minnesota paid leave. I know Linda and I have talked about this a little bit. It's something we were starting to prepare for. A lot of pushback from the school districts this year, uh, because they're, they're concerned A lot of pushback from the school districts this year, uh, because they're, they're concerned about costs there. Some of, some of the items that they're pushing for, um, they wanna clarify that, that premium split. Uh, they wanna, uh, exempt some election judges and some other officials, and then they wanna make sure that those benefits aren't stacked. Um, it sounds like it's possible it might be moved back to twenty-seven. I'm gonna follow that, we'll see. I don't know, Linda, do we have a cost that we thought was gonna, we were estimating it to be for the city next year?
Oh, I think it was around thirty thousand.
It was around thirty thousand.
They've already raised that, um, how much they want you to pay already.
Yeah, so it started off at point five-five, and now I think it's at point seven-eight or point eight.
Right, so it depends on how they, how they end up, and the, the point five-five was, was that one person?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's one side.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the employer. The employees pay the same thing, so.
And I heard it went up another point two-five, proposed.
Uh, you know, they haven't, they haven't, that, that would all have to be done, but, but it is coming, and so we're, we're, we're just watching it. Cause I know that if that's something that comes up, we're gonna have to have it worked into levy for next year because it's gonna be extra cost that's on the city's books, as well as the employees. Um, Dodge County Ice Arena, like I said, um, for some of you with a little bit less backstory on this, I know, uh, you know, Paul and Brian are a little newer. You know, it was originally a building that was constructed with multiple, uh, partners. At this point in time, it's just Dodge County and the city of Casson. Uh, so we do programming, Dodge County owns the building. So, uh, definitely something that I know the, the board's looking at and, and contemplating what they're gonna do here over the next five years as capital projects come up. That's the real big cost is, you know, roof replacements and condensers and things like that, so.
Trion.
Right. Anyway, um, guidelines for the Fire Hall Room, so this is something I would like some feedback on. Um, cause I've had some inquiries from different people, and the, uh, my, my belief is that I think we should be treating everyone the same. Um, whether they're in the department or not, I think that we need to have them registering, uh, for the, uh, the building, just like we do for anyone else from the public. I think that, I think that's, that's important to do that. Um, you know, I have had some feedback from the, from people in the public that agree with that. Uh, however, if you'd like us to exempt fire department members from that, uh, it's something we can work into that policy. So, I guess I'm looking for feedback on that tonight.
Oh, I'll, I'll start. So, I'm a firm believer since it's a city-owned building by the taxpayers, that if we wrench it out, no matter who you are, you pay. Because if you give exemption to the fire department, now you gotta give exemption to the city members, and then it, no, everybody should pay. I'm a firm believer in that. Uh, far as the two events that they're having right now, they've booked. Um, the one, uh, for the, the Brian the Helverson Memorial. I thought about charging them, but until-
Paid already.
But, they did, okay, and they also offered to go in, out of donation, they wanna pay for half of an AED for the fire department. So, so if they're willing to pay, cause I don't want them taken away from the event space, so I think they should charge a minimum fee. And say, even if it's four hours, and then we can donate the rest of it as a staff. But any place that wants to do it, I think should pay, even there's, uh, the ice fishing.
The fishing paid too.
Okay. Cause that, at one time, they had talked of not paying, and so I appreciate that, cause then if they can pay, I think everybody should pay. Cause it's, it's a community we're in for the community, and we're trying to cover our expenses. We're not trying to make money, we're trying to use it for the community. And if you do, if you forgive one, you have to forgive all in my mind.
It, it would be like if we asked everyone to pay for a pool party, but we don't ask the lifeguards to pay for one. They don't get a discount at the pool for a pool party, why would we do that with the fire department?
To, to be clear, the only people who aren't paying is gonna be official city use-
Yes.
And official fire department use.
That's right.
Yes, okay, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in agreement, I think everyone should pay, otherwise, everyone in the city has something they could say that they shouldn't have to pay for.
Yeah, and, and to Dan's point, I mean, you know, we are certainly flexible to a certain degree, working with people and groups too. You know, I mean, this isn't, isn't intended to be, it's not intended to be a money-making enterprise, so, I mean, we're flexible, but I, I just think it's important that everyone's treated the same way. Cause I don't think we want special treatment for anybody, cause I don't think that, at the end of the day, people really want that, so. Okay, well, I appreciate that feedback. Uh, moving on, a couple of other things, mowing contracts. So, uh, we had a lot of feedback that we wanted to look at different vendors this year, so we do have that RFP out. Um, I'm not sure how many good quotes we're gonna get back. So, it's possible we may have to do some in-housing of, of mowing this year with staff. Which historically, they had some mowing, you know, about five or six years ago, we switched over to contract because of the, it was a cost savings. We were able to reduce the, uh, the need for an additional employee, a full-time employee. Um, so we may be looking at doing some part-time help this year, we may be doing, uh, some other things, depending on what, uh, we get back on those quotes. If they're really examining it, we will, we'll try and in-house it. We did keep all the mowers, so that's, that's a plus.
We all find the mowers. Yeah, Manorville used to also go out for quotes on that as well, to hire someone part-time. Would it be cost benefit to us to reach out to their parks department and see if they'd wanna go in together and hire someone that would? Maybe we'll get more bids out there if we combine the two or close enough. They used to go out for bid on that, so they had two people on staff, and it was easier and cheaper for them.
Sure. And we get something, I can check with Manorville, I have Charlie check out. The other thing that we have talked about, and I reference it here, is it's possible to reduce some of the acreage. We might look at some more natural options, especially at Lyons Park.
Yep.
Uh, where we might do some taller grass and then just cut trails in it. You know, people can kinda do that, that's, that's one possibility. I'm not sure, nothing's set in stone yet, until we get those numbers back, we'll bring those to council for your, your review of back, probably the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April. Um, at that time, we'll have more information, so.
Tim, can you elaborate a little bit on, you said here, um, their ability to suitably complete the cemetery area?
We had a number of complaints last year from residents who have, uh, I imagine they have family buried in the cemetery, and they weren't satisfied with the, uh, cleanliness, the upkeep of, of the grass and that sort of thing.
So, on that, can we forego having them bid the cemetery and keep that as a staff only?
Well, I know that the staff's actually talked about doing the flip side, which is, you know, we had a good vendor out of Dodge Center, Jeremy's Lawn Clear, which-
Okay.
He ended up not having enough staffing to, to do, continue the contract. They thought about possibly bidding that one and having him do the cemetery itself, just because it's so time-intensive.
Yeah.
And then some of the simpler mowing, maybe we could in-house. So, it's possi-, I mean, there's a possibility that we'll have some different options that'll come out, so.
Be creative, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I know that they've looked at it, I mean, it, it's, it would take three, probably three guys, two days to mow the cemetery properly.
So, it, yes.
So, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, okay.
And the way they, they have the, the right equipment, they have the right staff that does mowing all the time, knows exactly how to do it, so. But yeah, like I said, I'll have more information coming back when we get those numbers. Um, last thing I've got tonight, I think, is this Dodge Center ambulance update. And so I did attend a meeting there, um, they're still discussing options, you know, it was largely the townships that were available. Um, uh, there was one, one city that wasn't there, Manorville wasn't at the meeting, but, uh, so, a lot of listening, did a lot of listening, and it sounds like the townships are interested in doing more voluntary contributions. Um, they're going to their township board meetings, their annual meetings in March here, so, um, we'll see what comes out of that for the townships. And, um, at this time, you know, Dodge Center was able to afford to purchase all the equipment they wanted to. Um, they had their ambulance and they had some new power cots, um, but they have exhausted their, their fund balance. So, I think that that's, uh, definitely gonna be, operationally speaking, this year, push is gonna come to shove. And I don't know what the state's gonna come in for, there's five or six bills that are floating around the legislature. Some of them are kinda like last year where they're just funding only, some of them are adding other criteria for ambulances. But, uh, we're just gonna stay on top of that and, and keep an eye on, on what they're up to, so. Uh, those are the items that I've got to highlight tonight, any questions from anyone?
Thank you, Tim.
You bet.
Next is our engineers' report, Brandon?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, three items tonight, uh, the first one, Southwest reconstruction. Uh, in your council package is a request for council action, a resolution calling hearing on the assessments, and the assessment map, and the assessment role. Uh, before we jump in, just a really high level, I know we got a new, one new council member on how special assessments work in our projects. Um, first of all, city council has a feasibility report called, uh, we produce feasibility report, uh, we say yes, we're gonna look at going forward with the project. Uh, we've sent letters to the property owners, have the first hearing, public hearing, property owners come in, thumb up, thumbs down the project. Uh, we actually had nobody in this situation right before you were elected there. Um, thumbs down the project, actually nobody even spoke upon the project, so city council approved going out for bids for the project, final engineering. We've done that, tonight we're gonna look at some of the bids, and then we're gonna look at having the second assess, assessment hearing, which is the kind of final assessment hearing. That's where we're gonna drop the gavel and approve, um, assessment role, or likely will, uh, council approval. And then we award the construction project immediately after and start construction. So, that's the schedule we're on, it's at a super high level, just to get everybody up to speed, so. Uh, with that said, so as Tim mentioned earlier, um, in the request for council action, bid results tabulations, and you see we had ten bidders, which is actually not a record, but it's approaching the record of number of bidders we had in projects. Um, the low bidder is SL Contracting at four point two-nine-seven, uh, the million and some change there. Uh, you see the engineering estimate is about four point six, so, um, engineers are looking better, uh, since COVID. We, uh, we, uh, had some estimates that were significantly over what we were thinking, but things have gotten kinda more settled in our industry, which is good. Um, cost breakdown, so now we, we rerun these costs back into our cost breakdown to determine the assessment amount, kinda rerun the numbers. Um, so, again, based on the low bid, um, we do still have five percent contingency, we can talk about that if we wanna run five percent, cause we do have to set the amount, um, to be assessed. And then five percent administrative engineering costs, you can see the preliminary, uh, project costs has come down some there. And then we run, uh, city policy and past practice on a lot of the projects, including some projects that former and current councilors have been assessed on as thirty percent of the roadway cost. Um, so you can see, we sent the property owners, preliminary was ninety-five, uh, nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Rerunning that, that ends up, uh, just over nine thousand, so nine, nine thousand thirty dollars. Current REU, which is residential equivalent unit, which we'll talk about here when we get to the map. Um, so you see that's down slightly, um, probably a bigger drop there because some of our roadway costs must be down compared to what we had previously.
So, it's a pretty substantial reduction.
Yeah, correct, um, yeah, what is that, uh?
Five or six percent.
Yeah, five percent, so.
Just five or six.
So, in your council package is a resolution to call the hearing on the assessments, that'll be here in March twenty-sixth meeting, so exactly one month from today. Um, so if you do approve this resolution, um, there is two attachments in there, two, uh, attachment, exhibit A goes to the newspaper. Uh, we're required by law to post in the newspaper, and attendance B goes to each property owner, um, looks very similar to the first notice they had. Um, lays out kind of the, the legality part of it, and again, we're required to send them all this information. Um, talks about deferment, talks about partial payment, talks about how to payment, um, and then also talks about interest rate. We currently have that set at nine percent. It's been prime plus one and a half percents in your special assessment policy and past practice on all the assessment projects that we've done in recent memory. Um, so we've, uh, put that in there, but again, council can discuss that tonight. Um, and then we do have a map, um, that looks the same map that we had in the feasibility report, showing the REUs. You can see the different colors there represent different REUs, um, with the idea that a house is a house is a house. Um, so they get one REU, one purple. Uh, we can see we have some apartment complexes that have two REUs, and then there's, um, the Casey's has six, and then the whole block where Plaza fifty-seven on is eight. Um, again, that was a passed, uh, recommendation from the council that was in the feasibility report. Again, we can look at tweaking that if needed, uh, if you'd like tonight, or discuss it. And then finally, the, the revised assessment role, um, so it looked very similar to this in the feasibility report, we had different numbers in there, so we had different costs. We're just updating that based on the ASBID cost in the contingency, in the, um, administrative costs that we talked about, uh, earlier. Um, so that's what, uh, so we have, um, tonight, um, if you do approve, um, the number to be sent out to the property owners, just understand that that number can't go up. Um, it can come down at that assessment hearing, um, if you, you can only lower them from here, so if we send them this official notice, uh, we'd like to have a good understanding tonight that this is the notice that you guys wanna go with. Um, and we can have some conversation based on, you know, testimony from certain citizens, and we can lower the assessment for the property owner if so needed. And we could lower potentially like an REU for someone if you so felt so, um, to do that. Uh, you may have your third, fourth, and fifth job, we did that for the old school, we lowered some REUs, um, council thought that that was appropriate. So, we can have all those conversations after the assessment hearing, um, but again, can't go down. So, we're happy with the bids, revised the numbers, um, the cost per REU is going down. Um, I'll, we'll add too, um, that's pretty consistent, uh, with kinda the inflation we've had in past assessments, so I, I feel good from assessing fifty-seven. Third, third, fourth, and fifth, it's kind of feels right in that ballpark, cause we ultimately want, you know, everybody to feel like they're getting the same as everybody else got in other reconstructions. So, um, I'll pause there and see if you have any questions. Again, consideration for the resolution to, to call the hearing on the improvements.
You said, um, there's actually gonna be two more hearings?
I know, only one more.
So, so after the next hearing is when we decide what the actual assessment is officially?
Yep. So, we're gonna send a letter with that proposed assessment role at nine thousand thirty dollars to the property owners, they're all gonna receive it. It's gonna be in the newspaper, they're gonna receive it, required to send it to them. Um, and they're gonna be at their March meeting, they're all, whoever would like to attend is gonna be here. Anybody can come speak upon it, and then you, as a council, get to make the great decision of, of accepting an assessment role. And then that's the assessment role, it's set at that time, um, and then there's some recourse for them, if they wanna contest it, then we could negotiate it, um.
Yep, okay.
But you, you set it at the next.
So, I'm gonna reiterate what I've said at previous assessments, and that is, uh, I'd still like to see a path where we can reduce our assessment from thirty percent. Um, so I guess what I would ask is that if we can have some sort of information, looking at what a twenty-five percent assessment would be, and what the effect of that would be on not only the people in the assessment area, but I guess the rest of the town that would take on the extra five percent burden. Um, my understanding again is that the reason the thirty percent is because that is what we have to do by state law in order to get some, um, bonds that give us some benefit interest-wise. Um, so if we forego that benefit, what is the actual cost gonna be to-
Requirements actually for the four twenty-nine bond series is twenty percent.
Okay, so, I'd like to, I'd like to see what the pros and cons are would be to potentially lowering this to twenty-five percent, cause my calculator here says that that would take the assessment from nine thousand to seventy-five hundred, which is quite a substantial decrease. And obviously, that would get put on, the difference would get put on the rest of the city total. Um, I'm also concerned with, you know, obviously nine thousand dollars on a fifteen-year, nine percent. According to this calculator here, it's telling me it's ninety dollars a month that these people pay for the next, uh, fifteen years, assuming they can't prepay. So, I would like to see what our options are to potentially lower that. Um, and I believe you noted that, uh, if we approve what you're asking here today, that is the maximum. So, I would say that I'm fine with this being the maximum, and we can discuss lowering it, and we can always keep it here if that's what we decide to do.
May just, they offer some perspective and thoughts as you as a council. I was wanting you guys to make informed decisions, what you guys do is what you guys do. Um, just a little perspective, so total project cost divided by REUs, the, the cost per REU is sixty-two thousand nine hundred is the, is the total cost of project. So, we're charging them of the almost sixty-three thousand dollars that it costs per REU, we're charging them nine thousand on it. We could say we're recovering it from our citizens, so the other taxpayers are not paying all of the sixty, almost sixty-three thousand dollars per REU. So, I just wanna give perspective of what the amount that we're assessing to the property owners, just so you know what that number is. Same thing, we did third, fourth, and fifth, I think it was forty-nine thousand a property at that time, I think we charged, was it sixty-eight hundred or seventy-three hundred? So, same sort of thing, right? So, at some point, we keep reducing assessments, and I'm gonna ask the question, do we even wanna continue it, which is a whole nother conversation. So, a little perspective there, just so we understand it. The other thing we did on third, fourth, that went back and looked back, I don't know what we did on fifty-seven, but I mentioned again that the lowest project cost and the five percent contingency, that number hasn't been a cost that we've incurred yet. It's more my buffer when cost overruns or we hit something and have, um, some soil that we need to correct, and five percent administrative, if you're bonding cost. So, that is ten percent of the project cost, that, that may be something that we can look at reducing if you ultimately just wanna reduce the assessment. And to put that in perspective, we did third, fourth, and fifth, we, we carried a two percent contingency, and I looked back on that project and we did not, we, we were less than two percent contingency in that project. Very similar reconstruction of an older neighborhood.
What was the total cost compared, cause this one was five and a half, was that one about the same?
Seven million, it was like six point nine million.
Okay, so a two percent contingency on absolute terms is a little bit more, well, it's not more money probably than five percent on five and a half, but-
Yeah, or to put it differently, I would be comfortable if you guys reduced two percent contingency, cause my goal is to hit the goal at the end. We go over that, what happens? We just, this, the city as a whole eats more costs with the assessed, right? Which would be the same thing as lowering the assessment, so it's kinda just, where does that number come from? With the idea that we keep consistent with what we've done in the past, um, so we're end up in court again, um, we have more, um, I, I, I think a better stance to say we followed what we did in the past. Uh, I think that would make me feel a little better, maybe your attorney too, to say we kept it at thirty percent, but we just reduced the contingency.
At some point, at some point in the past, we weren't charging this thirty percent assessment, and we've changed it since, so.
Boy, I'm telling you, they were charging a hundred percent.
Yeah. So, it's changed, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess-
Well, I understand your argument, I, I think that going forward, I would like to see us try and reduce the assessment, because the burden, this nine thousand dollar per house is a house is a house. Like, that's a, that's not small, like, that's a pretty big burden for somebody to take on. And I don't know when we sent out, uh, was it in December, we sent out the very first initial at ninety-five hundred?
Yep, ninety-five.
Basically, that was a notice that says, hey, you got nine or eleven months to pay this, or you have to take out a loan.
Uh, no, it, it, yeah, essentially, yep.
Cause November is when it's gonna be due.
Yep.
Of twenty-twenty-five.
Yep.
So, and that does not feel right to me, so, I know we have the authority to do it, but I'd like to see us try to run that down a little bit, to try and reduce this burden on every house.
Yeah, again, just for clarity, um, yes, that would be due, that's when it gets put on their assessment of their taxes, and then they basically pay, um, it has a payment plan, so they'd be paying, I think you said ninety dollars a month, assuming that that number is correct.
If this amortization calculator is right, it's ninety-one dollars a month.
Yes, I'm assuming it is, so, um, it's not due, so they don't take out a loan, it just, we're, we're kind of their bank, so, I just wanna, just so we're clear.
It's not a loan, it's-
It's an encumbrance on your property through a taxing, yep.
It's paid like a loan through the county.
Fair enough, yep, you don't have to take it out, yep. Again, I'm not arguing for one way or the other, I'm just wanting it to be clear discussion, so what we've done in the past, what you guys do is your project, I fully understand that. If you wanna sack them, so we don't have assessment hearings, and we'll sack them, and I don't have to call assessment hearings, so, but, I, go ahead.
Well, uh, I guess I'll chime in a little bit. I agree with what you're saying, Paul, I, I, I've been assessed myself. Um, my concern of changing it now would be that it, it does seem unfair to the, if we ever made major changes to this assessment compared to fifty-seven, third, fourth, and fifth, my concern would be changing it now. Um, but I think, I, I agree with Paul, we're down the road, I think it'd be nicer to bring it down.
So, we, yeah, I mean, yes, we've assessed, we've assessed for years, I mean, personally, I've been assessed, I mean, a lot of us have been assessed. It's an improvement to your city, it's an improvement to your home. I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking down the road, changing it for the projects, but now is not the time to change an assessment when we're in the middle of a project and we already got bids. Uh, you know, especially after, we just did fifty-seven, third, fourth, and fifth, that's all done in the last six years, give or take, seven, okay? But, so, if we could change the contingency, if you feel comfortable with that, that would work. I, I don't wanna be caught behind the ball, but if you think that would work, I think that'd be a good pro, way to do it on this one, and then we, we put it back in- And then we put it back into discussion, we don't drop the ball, we keep it going, and we'll talk about it, and then for future projects, we can look to see if we can save. Yeah, I know it's a huge burden, and people know this, but they also know that some, how old this infrastructure is in their area, it's, they know there's a lot of issues there. When they did not come to the first assessment in disbelief that we're doing it, I think that spoke volumes that they want it done, and they know the value of it. So I think we keep going forward on this one, and we look at it and see, you know, if we can change it. So that's my belief.
I just wanted to take a note here that when we originally had this discussion about approving the project, I had mentioned assessments, and we said we will have a discussion about that later. So the whole, when you say that we've already approved the project, we shouldn't be adjusting the assessments, is literally the exact opposite of what we said when we were approving the project. We said, let's not talk about assessments now, that comes later. So this is me waiting until now to discuss it, because this is the assessment discussion. So I would have had this discussion with you sooner, but it wasn't relevant to what we were doing before, so I withheld. So I, I don't think it would, I don't think it would hurt to look at the numbers, and like you said, Dan, we can leave it where it is for this one, and for next year's project or a future project, we can be more serious about bringing it down, but I would like, it doesn't hurt to have the information about what we're looking at, using these numbers that we have in front of us, which are hard numbers now that we've had quotes.
Well, I guess, if you're saying that we want to stay with the assessment that's on here now, is what you just said, but look at numbers, I don't think you want to change, look at the number on this one, because now you're sending a mixed signal to the people that are on this project, you know.
I think what you could do is, I mean, we can use this as a relevant guideline.
We can look at numbers at a meeting prior to this, prior to this hearing, right? And that would be less of a mixed signal, I assume, than talking about potential lower numbers while we're at the hearing, correct? Because we need to wait another month before the actual hearing, right?
You get one extra council meeting in there, yeah.
So we could either do it at that one, or wait till after that hearing, and do it at a later one, using these numbers as a guideline.
Sure. I mean, I think we can use the numbers as a guideline, it's a nice, because it's a new, I mean, it's a relevant project, with, you know, recent pricing and all that, and then, you know, if the council as a whole wants to take a look at changing that percentage, I think that's something that, the policy could be changed outside of changing the project. You know, and so maybe going forward, we can, but it's up to the council. You know, at the end of the day, I mean, it's a contentious thing. I wish there was an easy way to pay for these projects, because, you know, as Brandon's alluded to several times, you know, he doesn't necessarily like standing in front of an assessment hearing either, and I think we, you know, Paul, you've been through a few of them now, and Brian, you'll get to see one for sure. You know, so, you know, I mean, I'm open to changes, different cities are doing different things, some cities have gone to that, you know, collection on the people's utility bills, things like that, so there are possibilities, but, but yeah, I'm open to whatever the council wants to do, so.
Is changing it from 30 to 25% signaling that the project, I'm trying to think of how I want to phrase this, Paul. Each project's on a different area town. Are we saying if we take 5% off and spread the wealth towards everyone, is, what's the, outside of being fair in costs, is there a justification for taking 5% off this, then maybe taking 10% from another one? Where do you draw that line?
Well, that's the tricky part, we had this discussion a while back when McCrory was in here, and he was the one that suggested that maybe we taper it down, right? At 30%, we try to reduce it slowly, to try and alleviate that issue of, oh, well, I paid 30%, now you guys are paying nothing, right? So instead, if we can gradually try to phase it out, it might be more amenable.
You're benefiting different than someone that doesn't live in the area. So you're getting something that no one else is getting.
Yeah, I understand that argument, but a lot of people drive through Southwest Cassin that are going to get the benefit of all the roads, and the fact that it's not going to flood as much, or at all, hopefully, that don't live there, right? And we can look at my example in particular, I live on Manerville Avenue, there's 10,000 cars a day drive past my house, they get the benefit of that road, and they didn't pay an assessment, right?
For that project, but they might have paid it on their own.
Right, that's my point, though, is eventually, everybody's going to get it, so instead of somebody, everybody eventually getting it, and then having this big lump thrown at them with less than a year's notice, hey, you got to pay this, or go on a payment plan, I would rather, me personally, I think it's better for me to pay a little bit more over the long haul than to ever have to do along something like this. And granted, we usually talk about these projects well in advance, so we know when something's coming. Obviously, the people who live in Southwest, they probably got their notice two months ago.
They got their notice in 2019 when it flooded, and they came complaining to the city council and administration, saying fix our side of town, so they've known for five or six years, there's a fix needed, we just didn't know what the.
But they didn't know what it was going to cost them, right? They got their notice in December, says, hey, this is what we're going to do, and this is what it's going to cost you, right? So now they're all going to be here and be like, you should be doing this for free for the damage from the floods, and we pay our property taxes, you know? And I agree with all that, I just, this is one of those things where it's like the police department, some people benefit more than others, and we all agree to just share the cost. And to me, this is something where I, I would personally think it'd be better for everybody to share the cost, even if not everybody gets the same benefit, because of this, this $9,000 that's getting thrown in somebody's lap.
Do you apply that to all new developments, then?
I'm sorry?
Do you apply that to new developments with new roads, because those people that purchased those slots are paying all of that?
They're paying all of it because the road was just built by the developer, yeah.
And this road's going to be just newly built.
But when the time comes around for those roads to get redone, they won't have to pay for it again, because they've been slowly paying it, just like everybody else in town on their taxes. I see both sides, I'm just saying that I would prefer spreading it out rather than having a special assessment, so, and we can disagree, that's fine, too.
Okay. I'm actually going to agree with you, Paul. I was shocked when we got our assessment, and probably something came in the mail, and I don't know, maybe we didn't look at it close, but eventually, the whole city does get the benefits of this. So I'm just not sure when the right time to make those changes.
70% of the cost is shared over the whole rest of town, so 70% of that cost is already being paid by the rest of the community.
Actually, more than that, it's only fif, you know, 9,000.
Right, because only, only the roads, yeah, obviously, they all get it over.
62,900 is, is.
So you're talking about 15%.
Yes, 15%.
85% of the cost is being shared by the.
So, I don't know. Like I said, at the end of the day, whatever you guys want to do, but I don't want to hold the project, I think this is a good debate to have, absolutely. This is something we talked about Saturday, because we do have first and second Northwest as something we're going to be talking about eventually, correct?
Yeah, I'm actually going to add that to the agenda.
Well, it's not already on it, but that's, that's our next project where we're going to be asking people to do this, so maybe that's when we start having those major discussions.
With that said, I'll make the motion to approve this call for a public hearing.
Yeah, we have a motion to call a public hearing for Southwest reconstruction, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion carries, thank you, everybody.
All right. Second item, Mayor, maybe a little easier discussion, but still a fair amount of cost, South Water Tower and Booster Station, Project Award, in your council packet is a RCA request for council action, and then a resolution to award and approving the bid. So you can see there, we solicited two bids, we had two bidders, sorry, for two different schedules, one was a 250,000 gallon capacity tower, and a 400,000 gallon capacity tower. Our engineering estimate on that was 2.9 million, so we slid underneath that. The low bidder was McGuire Iron for both capacity towers, or both, both schedules that we bid there. So now, there's really a discussion and looking for some direction tonight from council, and then asking you to kind of pick a size, if you will. And this is kind of related to the Fairgrounds Tower, if you may remember that, tower discussion, we built that tower a little less than what we were planning for, with the idea that we would build this tower to the south, and that number was 250,000 gallons. So that's ultimately my recommendation, it's not a strong recommendation, I just want to be clear on that, because as you can see there, 250,000 gallons would provide storage requirement for a city population of about 14,000 people, and about, ideally about 3,000 south of Highway 14. I didn't go and count the number of houses in south of Highway 14, I think it's about 1,000, just my rough guessing there. And obviously, we were having some development to the south there, right? We're talking about expanding our mobile home park, we've seen a couple businesses come in there, we see, you know, potentially a hockey rink moving in down there, so we're seeing, we're expecting some growth, and that shows in our comprehensive plan. So that's what we would ultimately, if we built the 250,000 gallon, again, that would be kind of the equivalent populations, it's not quite that easy to calculate, but just to give you an idea, how we as engineers kind of get you guys, so you can make educated decisions. So hypothetically, if we approved the 400,000 gallons, what does that ultimately provide? About 16,000 people, and about 5,000 people in the south zone, because that south zone's really, you know, what's going to use this tower, south of Highway 14 in the higher pressure zone. And that is equivalent population with no additional heavy water users. Now, what are heavy water users, you don't have any really in Cassin, a lot of small towns don't, but that can also kind of upset our water systems when we have a huge water user come in, say, milk plant, or huge industry that use a lot of water, there's not a lot of them around, but I just want to be clear that that doesn't include there, is not included in there. So maybe something to consider, if we thought there'd be a heavy water user south of Highway 14, then we may change our recommendation. But also, we have a bid here that is, was that $500,000 more to kind of up in size. So that's our recommendation, 250,000, because of population, 25 years out in 2050 would be about 14,000, we'd have discussions about when do we build our fourth water tower. So again, it's not a strong one, we don't have any issues, if you guys decide to kind of want to say we're growing down there, we want to, we want to build it, we think it's the best thing for the community. What do we worry about from a staff level? If we did build this one, we get some stagnant water, and have freezing in the tower, well, we'll just put that level down farther, so we can combat that, we can work with that, and not use as much of the balance in the water tower, and keep the cycle time pretty short over there. So we can work with that, that's not a problem, so I guess I'll maybe pause there, probably have a discussion here on size of water tower, and ultimately, consideration of the resolution toward the project, so.
Question I have for you, if you did the 400,000, you had that extra half a million, where does that cost come from, which would be a city's discussion, but then also, what about maintenance and upkeep, if you're not using the full capacity, does it affect any of that?
No, I don't think so. It's like anything else, though, we're going to put a big chunk of metal in the air, we're going to paint it here in 25 years, so you're just painting.
So you'd be extra cost in painting.
Yeah, you have extra cost in painting, but again, what is all the cost in painting? Getting a contractor, getting an engineer to get the plan, so, again, you can see the size here, right? Because if you build 250, you're at 2.8 million, but then to upsize a little more, it's a, you know, that increase in size is, you know, not, it's more cost effective just to increase the size, but.
The other question I have too, then, is if they're looking at that solar panels farm going south of town and towards Byron, is that going to offset our growth? Isn't there, wasn't there that one time?
I think that's pretty far south of downtown, yeah.
I just, you know, I didn't know that would offset the growth.
No, I don't think so. You know, it's Highway 14 corridor, the long-term plan, growth to go east, and then, you know, it's just a nice area, right? A lot of traffic.
Yeah, no, I agree, I just, I don't want to spend extra if it's putting something up that's not going to be utilized, but yet, I kind of want to make sure we're getting, for an extra $500,000, you're getting 150,000 gallon more capacity, which, when we put up the one at Fairgrounds, we looked at putting a bigger one, but that probably wouldn't have helped us on this side of town anyways, because of the.
Yeah, the discussion there was, we still needed to build one south of 14, because of this boosting issue and getting higher pressure over here, so it really fit what we were looking for.
Yes.
Because we were stuck building one down here regardless, we really were. And if we built the big one at the Fairgrounds, we'd probably still be looking at 250 up here to serve south of Highway 14, so.
In terms of cost, I mean, either, whether you do the 2.9 million or in change, or you do the 3.3 or 4.4, I mean, likely, we'll have a, we'll have a debt issuance. Sarah and I have talked about that, and, you know, it's a matter of timing, the schedule would be, we'll be in coordination with the vendor, because we aren't going to issue the borrowing before we have. If we can, if we can do it later in the year, then we will, we'll be able to forestall having any interest payments, you know, earlier than, I mean, I don't, we don't anticipate them finishing the project early.
Right.
One of the reasons in the bidding documents, we allow them extras because of their difficulties they indicated in materials acquisition and labor. So we would likely be looking at a borrowing for a couple of projects, so we'd lump into one debt issuance this year, or possibly early next year to pay on all the cash flow looks.
Any input from? Do we have a projected amount of time before we hit that next limit, or we have to go build another water tower, if we do build a smaller one, population-wise?
2050, it looks like, 25 years?
Yeah, so in Tim's, Tim's report, he said that the smaller tower should be good for 50 years based upon current growth, so.
That's right, more it.
What's the lifespan of a water tower?
Really, a long time, right? It's a piece of metal, it's only to keep it painted, it lasts a long time. Yeah, I would say 100 years. We just took the one down in One Domingo, it was 100 years old, that was pretty good.
The one, the old one in Northwest was still being used in the 1990s, right? The historic one?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah?
The one there in the row?
It's 100 years.
The one at the Fairgrounds, we took it up perfectly.
Which is that one right up there?
Yep, right there, you know, that one was perfectly fine, it needed a paint job, but we took it down just because it was too small, you know, to the point.
How old was that one, you remember, man?
That was 1960s, I think.
Yeah.
About 50 years.
50, 60 years old? And it was still functioning, it was just undersized?
Yeah, we just, we either going to have to build another tower up somewhere else, just take that one down and put a bigger one up, since we elected to do. That was a little bit of the heartache, of we were taking down a perfectly good tower, it's not that pretty, but taking down a perfectly good tower, it just needed a paint job to put a bigger one up, you know, if we would have, in the 60s, knew that we were going to grow as much as we did in the early 90s and 2000s, we would have maybe made a different decision, I don't know.
The new ones aren't necessarily that pretty either, but compared to the old one. But anyway, I would.
That one is not functioning, by the way, so.
That's fall of sand, right?
I would just like to also say that, I mean, if we're looking at 50 years with current projections, and there's no reason, I think we should ignore current projections, and then on top of that, it's a half a million extra dollars, I know value-wise, it seems like a good use of a half a million dollars, but given that the water fund, in my opinion, is not as strong as our other enterprise funds, and now we're having to build another water tower we weren't planning on a couple of years ago, I'd say, let's go with the smaller one, save the half a million dollars, and, you know, if the growth is better than expected, then awesome.
With the growth, yeah, I agree.
And maybe to bring that discussion full circle, that's a lot of the whack, the water access charge, if we're growing, we're also collecting water charges, so, can come into that conversation, too. But are we charging enough, so?
So you need a?
Yeah, like a motion to approve the resolution toward the project, assuming it's Schedule A, to McGuire Iron, authorizing staff assignment.
So I would look for a motion on the water tower.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Uh, Schedule A, 250,000?
For the smaller, yeah, for the smaller.
I just want to verify.
Yep.
So we have a motion to verify for the 250,000 gallon water tower.
Second, that.
Second from Ryan, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Thank you.
All right, final item, Mayor and Council, Main Street Lights, we are looking at a All right, final item, Mayor and Council, Main Street Lights. We are looking at requests for council action. We're going to make kind of some decision on some lights or provide staff direction on kind of a budget and a look for the lights. Uh, we mentioned other projects. This is kind of holding up our other downtown project with the, paving behind the Legion and the other streets, 8th Avenue, those trails. Uh, we're looking at bringing these lights into that project. So we're going to be moving those lights regardless for a bump out, taking down the existing lights. So maybe now is the time, if we're going to, we're going to do this work to lump it in there to get the contractor to do it. Um, and I'd like to wrap those plans up and get it out to bid because it does take some time for us to, to do that. So looking for some direction tonight. Request for council action in your packet. So we talked about last meeting, lights in generality. You guys wanted some more information, so that's our intent tonight to provide that information. So there's 38 lights along Main Street. Uh, they are at the end of their useful life. I understand one fell down last year and uh, when I told Electric Department, we were just going to move the current ones. He says, no, we're not. We're not going to be able to hardly put them back up because their base are rotten on them. So they kind of blew up from there. What are we going to put back? We're not going to put back the existing ones. They're super expensive and don't last very long. So we're looking at making a change there in the best interest of the city. Um, so ultimately, there's eight taller poles located at the intersection. So they look very similar to the ones you see there at the liquor store photo. Those are the 30 shorter poles or mid-block and more pedestrian level poles with the idea at the intersection as taller poles, very similarly to what we did like on 16th Street where we have taller poles at the intersections. We have some smaller, um, lights. And then moving forward, there was some discuss, uh, discussion at a staff level about North Broadway. Recently did some street lighting in the city Rochester. Um, so I snapped a couple of photos there. So sheet number two there, you can see the mid-block. I call it acorn style pole there. Um, and I will note that there's some spots that put some flags. That is what was done in North Broadway, north of downtown. Um, and this is kind of mid-block Cobra style and more of the downtown Rochester area. It's kind of hard to see there, but they have a taller light and then they have a shorter pedestrian light. It's Cobra style that kind of looks over the, the trail, uh, in sidewalk net in that situation. So, um, acorn styles are more expensive. They're about $10,000, mid-block, um, smaller Cobras are more like 7,000. I will note that the, the smaller mid-block Cobra styles, there was more of them than what we maybe have. So we may have to look at that lighting a little bit to see how much we got to power those up or how much light fixture itself has to be in there. But something I think staff can work on as long as we have some, um, general discussion tonight or direction from the council tonight. So kind of adding all up, right? Let's get to total project costs. You guys can make good decisions. If we leave the taller Cobra lights at the intersections, which I think are going to be needed and shown in the picture, um, that's going to be about 80,000 regardless of what we do with the mid-block ones. Just want to show the 30 mid-blocks. There's a lot more of them. What those costs would be based on that estimate. Um, so total with the acorn style, about 380,000 and the Cobra style about 290. So it's about a hundred thousand dollar discussion here. Again, this is budget numbers, um, to provide us some direction on the project. So I'll pause there. They're downtown lights. I know councils like to look at them and maybe make some decisions and uh, staff doesn't agree on what style to go with. So, um, you guys may not agree with staff and may not agree as a, as a body. So, um, I'll pause there and.
Thank you, Brandon. The, the first question I have is you said the acorn style allowed spots for banners and we hang banners downtown. Does the Cobra style have that?
I think we could add those.
How much fee would that be?
That's, that's not a lot of cost. I mean, the fixtures themselves are pretty expensive. I know the, the, um, EDA or, uh, Chamber of Commerce has spent a fair amount of money on those, um, banners. I know that's pretty important. So that's something, I think in any style we would incorporate, so.
Cause I, and then is it easier for them to hang them on the acorn or the Cobra? Cause is it the same cost? Cause it's our staff doing it and, and that's going to be a cost, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be the same.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. On the Cobra style mid-block ones, are those dark sky lights and it's hanging a banner on one side if it could impact the light?
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. I see what you're saying there, yep.
Yeah, cause, cause if that impedes on your lighting, then you're better off on the other one. That would, the only.
The Cobras are going to go down with light, which you want on your sidewalk.
Yep.
It'll look like there's more light blockage on the acorns. I don't know.
I'm not an elect. I don't work with light, electricity, but the cheaper seems more economical for lights.
But the acorn style looks like it's going to give off more light.
Which, and, and you want.
What you're looking for downtown.
Yeah, safety downtown. You want the light and the safety, you know, if it costs extra, but it's more, looks safer and feels safer. It's more beneficial, I agree, I think.
The other question would be on the, the mid-block Cobra style, is the throw as great as it is on the acorn since that's more of an open fixture? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's where we'd have to, um, go back to our electrical engineer that we work with, uh, look at the lighting plan to see exactly how that would work. And then work on what that projection would be on. There's different fixtures that possibly present on this. The idea was style and cost, I think that's what's going to drive this. And then if you give us a style and a cost budget, I can work with that and we can come back with maybe a final approval or, if we're in budget, maybe staff can make the approval. If we like a certain style, assuming the council's not interested in exact lumens and size of poles and all that jazz, so. Cause there's aesthetic, there's aesthetic here too that I want to be conscious of, so.
But if, if you're saying that on the, the cheaper, the Cobra, that you can get the same kind of lighting as the acorn within reason, I would be more in favor of that as long as, you know, the price stays similar. Because that's our ultimate goal. You want it to look good and you want it to be safe and you want it to be your best value.
Yep.
I'd also like to, just looking at these numbers, they're, they're, these are not including installation, right?
No, I.
That would be staff installed, right?
No, it's installation.
This includes installation.
Yes, taking down the old poles, uh, putting new poles up as part of a construction project. So it'd be done as our, in our construction contract.
So the taller intersection light?
Little project cost, by the way. That is the intent.
So taller intersection light costs 10,000. It doesn't cost 10,000, it costs 10,000 to buy it and put it in?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay, so we're looking at a quarter million to 400,000 dollars that we didn't plan on taking on the electric budget this year. We've got multiple other large electric project considerations coming up. So I'm curious and, you know, that seems like a pretty big impact. So maybe we consider the four that need to get moved and are not good and are, and are at an intersection. Do those for sure, 100%. And then maybe we do this over two or three years instead of doing it all at once. And we identify which ones are the worst, do those first, and then next year we can come back and do another batch because this is a, a large chunk of money that, that was completely unaccounted for.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, so I guess what, if we can add, and I'm just going to interject here, is style, can we, can we, can you give us some feedback on what you want for the style first? Cause if you can do that, then, cause I mean, your point is, is well taken, Paul. I had a good conversation with Jared today about it. And, you know, if, if we can break it out over several years, we might be able to utilize staff time to do some of this work, you know, because I'm always looking at reducing costs too. Now, this is ease because a vendor is just going to, a contractor is just going to do them all at once and be done with it, which is nice. But, you know, if we had to break it out, but so if, if we can get that style feedback from you guys, that'll give us, uh, you know, it'll help us with the discussion, I guess.
Okay. Personally, I don't really care about the style, so you guys can hash it out.
I like that. That sounds great.
I'm in favor of the Cobra. Yeah? I'm just looking at the cost.
Well, if cost was not, if cost was not, I want this to look good too, you know, and I think there are ways for us to reduce cost, even if we were using it a little bit more expensively. If cost was not an issue, Dan, which one would you prefer? My preference.
I like the acorn.
Okay, I like to have that. I think it's more of a street light.
But I was looking at for the best.
Historic street light.
Yes.
You know, quality of life kind of, you know, that to me is a, a more attractive light, but, I mean, I'm a realist too, you know, I don't like to spend money.
I also look at it, the acorn, there's two reasons I like it. One is the, the way the banners are going to hang on it. And then, and it gives you the nice look downtown. The other ones are, you're generic, but I was looking for mostly cost. But if you go off of cost, I would pick acorn if you can utilize. But my, my issue of going down the road and doing something now and something later is two things. One, the possibilities of matching and getting them to match. And two, if they're already falling over, how safe and how much liability if we have them start falling over on people? Or in the intersections, and now you got an emergency to repair them.
Sure.
So that's something to look at.
Any other, any other style feedback, though?
I like the acorn ones. They look like the ones that we've already put in on the north side of town.
Sure.
I think our businesses have tried really hard to start updating their, the looks of the outside of their business. So we want to honor that. So if we think the acorn matches that style better, then that's fine. But if, if, if businesses were indifferent, then I would say go with the cheaper one.
Most of the ones I've talked to are, are somewhat indifferent, but.
Yeah, I mean.
But they do want new lights. They don't want to pay for it. So we're not going to, we're not going to charge them. We're not going to assess them a special lighting district, Paul, so don't worry. I got you on that one.
Thank you.
I'm a bit of a mixed bag. I think I'd like the acorn mid-block and the Cobra on, at the intersections.
I think in that, in what I describe as the acorn style, that's what we would do. We would put the Cobra, the tall Cobras at the intersection.
Yeah.
Light up the intersection, then have pedestrian mid, mid-block shorter, like acorn lights. Um, and I think there's six per block kind of intermediate ones. It'd be six total, so four.
So it sounds like the consensus is probably going with the acorn if it's feasible financially.
And if they all match.
Okay. Well, I mean, to, to Brandon's point though, I mean, it'll be something like that first picture there where it's mid-block, acorn and Cobra on the corner.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So that's the style thing. And then, you know, budget guidelines, like I, I do appreciate the feedback. I mean, like, you know, we can take a look at like a not to exceed 300,000 or something like that. And if we can make it work within those kind confines, I kind of, I feel like we can make that work. Especially if, if we can do some of the installations ourselves, but, um, you know, I guess it's up to the council there.
Is it cheaper to buy 30 in bulk versus buying one or two here or there?
If we were doing ourselves, probably, and we would probably end up storing some of those before we would install them ourselves, if we end up doing that.
Just because if we only buy enough to replace the ones that we need to, and we end up having to buy them one at a time or two at a time, whatever it is, I don't want to spend more long-term just to.
I mean, I guess what I'd like to kind of do is I'd like to make this an option as part of our bid package so I can see what the contractor would say this will cost. You know, and then we can accept the rest of the bid package, even if we reject the lighting component of it. I don't know if that's something you can do, Brandon?
I think we, if, if the idea was let's, let's maybe have two options and two different price points, we'd probably do it as an alternative. So maybe like base bid, lesser cost. And then an alternative to have maybe nicer lights that doesn't really take a lot of our time. It's not going to cost you any more really engineering. Secondly, I haven't, you know, we haven't met with our electrical consultant yet to really hone down these prices. This is what I got from the city Rochester on their, their prices on their recently constructed projects. So if the direction is go that style, have an alternate bid, well, then we can, we can refine that and have future conversations. I just need to get this kind of moving, if you will, since I'm just looking for from a council direction.
I think we have a consensus that we liked acorn and we'd go with the.
Work on the price and I'll report back.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually have an alternative within the bid of a base bid of a lower price and a higher of an acorn.
Can I also ask, we get some more detailed report about the actual condition of all 38 of them instead of just, oh, we had one fall over?
Sure.
Cause it's all the same age, so.
Yes, but they may have different, gotten plowed, more snow on them or something.
I can ask Jared for update on that.
If he can go out and be like, there's two or three that, you know, if you touch them, they're going to fall over, or if he's going to be like, yeah, they're all complete trash.
I don't think they're in that situation where he's expecting them to be that fragile, or we would have removed them already. But I will definitely ask him for some feedback and he'll be able to give it to us. That shouldn't be a problem.
On both of them banging around, setting them back down, he has some concerns about.
Yeah, but there's only four that need to actually be built.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think it's more of a general.
Yeah, so, and I wouldn't be opposed to buying all of them and then having our own guys install them if that's more economical and they can do it slowly.
But just double check on the pricing of our guys doing it versus the new bids, because our guys are so much pro and then it's taking away from.
That's why I said if we can include that as an alternate, we can say, okay, it would, it would cost, if they say, if they say, oh, it's 150,000 dollars, well, then it's probably a no-brainer for us to do it. But at some point we'd say, okay, it's more cost effective for it to do it.
Cause we got to have our guys doing their other projects too.
Well, right, uh, right now that, if it was a slow year for the electric firm, and I know Jared said, you know, they're open to doing it and they know how to do it. It's, it's a matter of, they'd have to block off some parking stalls each time they did it. It would, it would be a little bit laborious, but we do have a lot of new subdivisions also. So that is something that takes a lot of time. But I, I think we've got the guidance we need on this one, so.
That's all. I think you had. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Um, next is personnel, a recommendation for the water, wastewater supervisor.
So including your packet as well as email out to you was information on, um, Mr. Dappin'. So I don't know if you have any questions on that, but the staff were recommending to, to have that, um, move forward as a, he's, uh, open to the job. He's, he's willing to take it at the level that we've, uh, provided for him, so.
And then that's not starting to tell potentially?
He would be probably starting in, uh, late May or early June. He's given, I mean, he'll, he'll give Dodge Center some time to, um, find somebody else. And we're not in a crisis mode. It's just fair. We want to fill that full-time position with, with a qualified DA applicant is, it's hard to find, so.
And then the current contract we have, how much time do you have to give him?
It's a, it's a 30-day notice.
So that would work.
Well, we'll talk with DA and, you know, he could be apprised of the situation.
And he could maybe work with him?
Yeah, I mean, our goal would be to have him probably work at least two weeks, maybe a whole month together, just so he gets transitioned over. And, um, this job would be a little different because what Dave's doing right now is just the plant. Whereas, you know, we'd be having the water system kind of getting Mr. Dappin' involved in that too, so.
So anybody have any other questions? The only one I would ask is we could post or state the price, that step and grade before we. I know it was in there, but I'd just like to have it public.
Yeah, no doubt. Um, we're looking at, here, I think I sent this out to everybody.
You did. I just, I should have looked it up. I apologize.
It was, uh, step four and it's, uh, $45.65.
And what grade was that?
Oh, that's on grade 14.
Grade 14, step four. Okay. With that information, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to.
To approve?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. We have a motion to approve hiring grade 14, step four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Thank you, everybody. And reach out to him.
Will do.
Thank you for, uh, finding somebody. We're, we're working through it. And I thank him for stepping, coming to asking us, so. Okay, next we have attorney. Anything? Nope. That's good. Thank you. Correspondence, is there any questions or concerns in there that you would like to ask about? The only one I was just curious was that Highway 57 Dodge County 16, that's 2027? Is that the way I read it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I thought it was actually this construction season we have.
So did I, and then, but, okay, then I read it, so I just wanted to verify that was, okay. Then after that, if there's nothing, is a roundtable discussion and I'll remind everybody, this is just where we can bring up ideas or questions. There will be no answers provided and it's something that we can, if need be, add to a future agenda.
Four of us went to the, um, League of Minnesota Cities event this past weekend. Couple of things that they talked about in the advance program. One of the questions I asked was about our Northwest potential project off the dump road for our multifamily housing units and single-family units and how to best approach communicating to our citizens about that project, because we had a lot of people come ask questions. They said be really diligent and giving information out soon, early, all the time, giving them a lot of chances to voice. Maybe doing listening sessions, housing them, housing chances for people to come in and talk about and ask questions about the project, because they want to be heard. So, oop, sorry. That was one of the things, uh, I asked about. And they talked a little bit. The color highlights for me were if, if it's a question, you can email the city minister at a prior meeting. Sometimes that helps move the meeting along. Although that was pretty interesting to hear. That's something I need to do. I know I need to do a better job of that. Sometimes I wait till the meeting to ask Tim questions or Brandon questions. Cause that way it doesn't catch them off-guard. It gives them a chance to think about the answer, emailing you back. And then where, you can email us as well, just not applying copy so we don't get in trouble, but asking questions ahead of time.
Well, you're good.
Part of what I got out of it too is they did actually bring up a little about social media and how everybody is encouraged to use it, but they also encourage staff and council members to be wise on what you say or share because it can, people can take that information and only use part of it and then use it and say, well, you said this. So it was one of, it was kind of interesting. And they said some cities are starting to use less of it because they're finding, they're having issues with it. Where people are only getting that order, you get a lot of people chiming in and it gets sidetracked and you forgot what that was even talked about. So where people like it, but they're saying it's hard to use. And, and also, uh, at that, we had a, a leadership training. I actually gave Tim my book from that. They supplied us a book from, and it, it talked about what kind of leader you are and what kind of team member you are. So it's not just necessarily a leader, but team member. And it was quite interesting. There's four different areas. It was quite interesting. Where you think you know where you're at until you take this little quiz and it was, and it, and then by doing it, they recommend even staff members to do it and department heads. Cause it, it helps you to know your weaknesses and your team members' weaknesses, because everybody has weaknesses and everybody has strengths. It was, it was really interesting. It was.
The other thing I thought was really interesting was the intergenerational conversation style piece. Sort of how to approach millennials when you want to ask them to do something versus how to approach Gen X when you want us to do something versus.
Baby war.
Baby boomers are more responsible to, are more responsive to more of an emotional side to the conversation. Whereas Gen X, it's like, just tell me what you want me to do and then leave me alone and let me do it. And then the millennials were more like, we think you're doing a great job and these are some more things we think you could do really, really well. It was something I'd never really thought about before, but it was an interesting concept.
And, and on that though too, they said, uh, the Gen X, which then their offspring, their children, their, is be the Gen Z. And they said that was actually the way she made it sound was the first generation where the kids wanted to be similar to their parents, where, where like Gen, Gen X is like, I don't want to be like baby boy. I don't want, you know, they, she said that was one of the first ones where they started about it. Only the Gen Z is wanting to use more technology versus the Gen X. But then the new Gen A, uh, Gen Alpha, which started in 2010, they said was more, uh, they're, they're taking, moving away from phones and social media. They're moving them away because they're finding out that it's more of a distraction to them than it was a help. So it was, it was really interesting. She's.
Are they going back to paper?
No.
Back to paper.
They said their children.
Their Gen Alpha's children.
But even, even the Gen Alpha were trying to move them away. Will grow up without cell phones, because they're seeing that those kids are seeing the detriment to themselves.
Yep.
It was quite interesting how we changed.
I'm just ahead of the game, Sarah. Sarah and I have this disagreement about paper versus, she's a no-paper, I'm a paper-everything, so. Do you have any feedback, Brian?
On, on paper or no paper?
No.
No paper.
On the trailer.
No paper, Tim.
Yeah.
Well, I, Tim, as, you probably noticed that Ryan and I had similar things, because I gave you a heads-up on something I wanted to talk about at the roundtable. I did think the training was really good, I enjoyed that, and I guess maybe I'll defer to Paul before I get into my actual roundtable discussion outside of training, but yeah, I, I found the training to be quite helpful.
Good, and useful, it was well worth the, the time that I spent, and the little bit of the fee that the city had.
Sure. That was the best one I've gone to in the last three.
Yeah, it was really good.
Even though Dan did invite me down to dinner and never showed up, so.
Well, you went to the wrong dinner room!
He told me he went to bed at six-thirty tonight, so I don't know, anyway.
He said he was done.
Otherwise, Brian did email me ahead of time, and there are some items included in Dropbox for you, so I don't know, Brian, if you wanna go ahead and talk about what you're interested in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's no plowing policy in there, as well as some feedback from the police chief, and from the fireworks director.
Yeah, so, um, I got my first parking ticket on Saturday, and that got me looking into the snow ordinance, and I'm not a large fan of the vagueness of our snow ordinance. Where I've usually come from, they, they broadcast a snow emergency, they declare one, they give you a set time not to be parked on the street, it's very cut and dry, either you're on the street at that time or you're not. When I went to look at our snow ordinance, um, let me pull that up one second, my apologies, I had it up. Uh, a snow emergency is defined as any time the quantity of snow warrants the deployment of snow plows, so I guess my issue then is, do I look at out my window until I see a snowplow go by, and that's when I know to move my car. Saturday, we got, what, maybe an inch and a half, two inches, over Friday, Saturday night, um, yeah, just not a big fan of it, um, I would, I would just like some, some guidelines for all the citizens to be like, if you're parked on this time, after we declare a snow emergency, whether it's via the, the Facebook, um, you know, the, however we want to do that, and then have set timelines, because then the other thing is, how long do I have to keep my vehicle off? Like, sure, the snowplow won't by once, but maybe he wants to go by another pass, so now I put it back out, can they ticket me then? So full transparency, obviously, I did get a ticket, and that's why I looked into it, but I found that I don't love our ordinance policy, or our snow ordinance.
Um, can we add that to?
Sure.
And I know March agendas are looking full, I mean, do we put it up to April? I mean, I don't, I, then also gives you time to look at, but I'm definitely all in favor of making it more transparent. The only issue I would have is, how do you notify? But we can discuss this down low, but again, no decisions made, I'd like to add.
So I include those items, and just so you all have them, cause I know, you know, Brian brought this topic, I wanna, the way that I want this roundtable to work is like, people bring things up, but then, I mean, I can't expect to answer everything right away, but so everybody's got this in their hands now, you can take a look at it, and I mean, I appreciate the points Brian brought up, and every city does it a little differently, so what we'll do is, we can definitely take a look at the agendas, I know we have the assessment hearing, meeting, which I'm gonna try and avoid putting too much content on, just because it'll probably be a little bit longer meeting anyway, but if we have a little bit shorter meeting, like, what we'll do is, we'll put this on there, and we can have a little bit more thorough discussion at that point.
Yeah.
Once people, and if you've got feedback on it, please email me, because, I mean, I incorporate those comments into what, what I try to bring back, so.
I mean, hopefully we don't have any more snow emergencies, but.
I mean, you know, same thing with any policy we have, they can be tweaked, it can be looked at, for sure, and if people are in agreement, I mean, we're glad to make those changes, so.
I think it's examples from other cities.
Yeah, for then, when we have the meeting.
With parking and requiring emergencies and.
Some cities just do alternate side of parking.
Some, yeah, and which is hard to keep track, I know my wife has a tough time with that where she works.
The big trouble area for us is always in the downtown, because, you know, that one is where the extra cost comes in if they have to come back and plow it again, and a lot of times they have to have to do it anyway.
And then there are signs out there in the city that state when our snow ordinance is in effect, and it's certain months, but I don't know, you know.
But everybody's got this stuff in their hands, so, I mean, we'll have it on the agenda for sure.
Tim, you said there was comments from the police chief and?
Yeah, so there's two items there, there's a cost, one of the questions I had from someone asking me about what it costs for coming back out again, if we're gonna send operators out a second time, so that's, that's what, you know, Charlie gave us as an estimate for what he would have if two operators were going out for a, a second run-through of like the downtown, for four hours of plowing, basically.
Okay.
And then the other item I have in there is, what the tickets cost and what the towing fee is, that was a question the mayor had, so.
Okay, I don't see that one, so I guess.
The bottom one. It's N-one-B, is toes and fines.
Yeah, I only have an N-one-A, so I guess I missed it.
Try to refresh it again, cause I just added it because Josh emailed me about six pages ago, so.
Oh, well, I downloaded.
It's a new item, so.
Okay, okay, I downloaded it, and.
Oh, don't worry.
It might've got updated, so.
I do kinda wanna bring up the actual ticket itself, too, so it's a paper ticket, by the time I got it, it was half in shreds, cause it had been snowed on, and it doesn't